I have six fifty-eight.
Undo it?
Yeah, so that they can see the app.
It was.
Oh, yeah.
That's good.
It's good now?
Yep.
Well, you can you can rename them. Like all of them. Yeah. Seven o'clock?
There's a lot more people on the table than.
I'd like to open the Thursday, September nine, twenty twenty-one meeting, the Bellingham Planning Board. Jimmy, you have some items on our agenda tonight, and I'd like to move the agenda around a little bit. The first thing I'd like to do is continue public hearing for Red Mill Defender Planning Zone by law. Jim, can you bring us up to speed on that?
Absolutely. So at the last meeting, we've discussed Red Mill. The applicant was finalizing the plan sets and finishing up a couple outstanding items with conservation. We have, they had a very productive meeting last night. It looks like everything's wrapped up on that end. We do have the final plan set that you you've seen in the Dropbox. And you now have a draft decision for consideration. We'll say the the hearing is still open as as we're waiting to incorporate that plan set. But if discussion has been exhausted, you are welcome to then close the hearing, which again would mean finalizing public comment, and then at that time you'd be able to review these decisions.
Do we have anyone in the in the public who is here on behalf of Red Mill Defender Plan?
Yeah, I do see Mr. Michael Grieden of Maryland Engineering. I don't know if you would like to come in.
Good evening all.
Michael, you want to get anything you want to add to what what's been presented to us so far?
I don't think so. As Jim stated, we we had a great meeting with the commission. We just we had a few final things to wrap up with them. Their peer review consultant is just going to sort of confirm that we've addressed those four or five minor items remaining. We did have a chance to review the decisions that Jim had put forth, and we appreciate that opportunity. Unless there are questions, I will simply listen at this point.
Anyone else in the public? I'd like to indicate a motion to close the public hearing. I have a motion of floor to I have a second. Close the public hearing on Red Mill Defender Plan. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, aye. Oppose. That motion passes and remains. Jim, can you give us a quick overview of the decision?
Absolutely.
I assume it's a favorable decision.
Correct. Yep. So at the at the previous meeting, the request was to draft a favorable decision. You have two in front of you, those two being the definitive subdivision plan that is along with the stormwater management plan permit. And secondarily, you have the downtown residential development overlay district special permits, and that might sound unique because it is. It's an overlay that was passed a few years back at town meeting, and so this is the first one and potentially only one that would get permitted under that overlay. And so through that special permit, it's still the special permit criteria as long as well as what was approved at town meeting for criteria for determination. So in the in the beginning of that decision, we go through each of the determinations that you guys have discussed over the over the couple of years of the permitting process. And then in section C, as typical for special permits, we have our conditions of decision. And they're fairly extensive. I know I've tossed this out early on and got some positive feedback. And I've tried to incorporate those into this decision. So certainly could take any questions or comments on either either permit. The subdivision permit is is rather specific to the the subdivision can regulations and really points back to the special permit in terms of more conditions. This really spells out the timeline for construction and really helps guide Tim when he's working with the developer and working through the subdivision. So happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions, Phil? Yeah, the Jim, number seven about the earth removal, I saw the mechanic street with the first way to exit out of that.
Right. So number seven in page on page four.
Page seven, number seven.
Page seven, number seven. Okay, the conditions.
This is seven hundred thirteen.
Seven hundred thirteen. Right. So, yeah, seven, number seven on page seven. So it was reworded to reflect because I know you pointed out to me about Hartford Avenue, I think was referenced.
Yeah.
And so now it points back to the zoning board of appeals decision, which went into much more greater length as to when and where material can be withdrawn from. And then.
Was it the same result?
It it actually is much more specific. It it starts on Mill Street because that is the only access originally. And then as soon as this is operational, this being the town center intersection, it that's the priority. And then finally, on the further down on mechanic streets near where the apartments are going, where Lincoln is, once they blast through that rock wall, that that becomes the priority because closest to the highway. So it this really just points back to that. So we're we're speaking all in the same language. And we're not contradicting each other.
Jimmy, as we transfer locations and they're doing the US report, are they going to go to the same the same you with the riprap and everything else?
Yeah, that's exactly right. Yeah, the the riprap riprap construction for each each one of them as as a procedure to their base.
About under page eight thirteen, number eight, multiple phases. Did we agree to three phases at the end of the day?
Right. So I know we spoke of that, and actually, it's referenced in here. I'm trying to. So there's a couple spaces spots where it references three phases. So I didn't add it into that one location.
So it's there somewhere.
Yeah. So we're actually just, well, one of them is just above and under, and seven, it talks about the the mitigation.
Three phases and.
And three phases, but it also is referenced elsewhere too. For the three phases.
See the thirty-five thousand?
Okay.
Great. Three phases. Thank you. So I have. Anyone else? Jim, I assume they make construction management program.
That's right. So part of this is they are required to provide not only a traffic management plan for earth removal, but construction management plan and a stormwater pollution prevention plan that will be reviewed and and approved. And we actually have been here for as Phil mentioned, the drainage basins to be monitored as well. So there's a lot of oversight for this project. It's a it's a big one for the town. So it's it's necessary.
As material and trucks leave this property, they'll be washed.
They will be covered.
Covered, and then.
Not certain about wash.
Wetting down of prevent dust accumulation.
The the riprap will certainly be wetted down and dust controls will be in place as required throughout the site.
I have another question. Are they going to have a clerk of the works?
Mike, you want to type that?
Yes, there will there will be somebody representing Lobos for Building Corporation that's assigned to this project, and I'm sure it'll be in close communication with town officials and also attend the preconstruction meeting that's also outlined in the documents.
Thank you.
And Jim, a preconstruction meeting will incorporate various departments in town.
Yeah. So the preconstruction meeting will be initiated through my office and then bring in Tim DPW. Please fire everyone. They sit around the table and go break down these conditions and make sure everyone's on the same page. Start off the the construction monitoring peer review, start off the the review for DPW as they will be inspecting everything that gets buried in the ground. So we try to start off on on the right foot as as a team, including the developer.
Right?
I have no questions.
Phil? Good job. I like to get a motion to approve the general decisions pending. Are we waiting for some last confirmation from last night?
No, 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 that I actually confirmed with our peer review that that's it's not related to anything regarding planning board or the plan set. So we we should be all set on our.
I have a motion.
So I'll move it. Jim, do you need a motion for each, or do you want one?
If we could do each, because special permits for votes.
I think you should. Okay, so I'll I'll move to approve the Red Mill on the Charles Downtown Residential Development Overlay District Special Permit Decision.
Do I have a second? Second. Here's a motion of floor to approve the decision for Red Mill Overlay for the Red Mill like Charles Downtown Overlay District Special Permit Decision. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose. I'm standing. That motion passes and remains.
So I'll move to approve the definitive subdivision plan of Stormwater Management Plan Permit. That's right.
I have a second.
Second.
There's motion of floor has been sent to approve a favorable decision for the subdivision plan and stormwater management plan for Red Mill on the Charles, dated September nine, twenty twenty-one. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Jim, can you just give a wrap up to those people that may be watching? This process has been rather cumbersome. Fully vetted. Just give us an overview.
Yeah. So while Michael's here, I guess I thank him for his partnership through this and and Kevin Lobos, sir. I know the board and them have had a long history over the last couple of years in this project. So we started about three years ago, maybe with discussing this property and what potential could go there. I know the developer had a few ideas that weren't overly. I don't think it was beneficial to the town and or community or the town center. Luckily, we had a developer willing to work with us and and together created this overlay district that went to town meeting and was voted favorably. So with that zoning in in place, that's been about two years before both the planning board and Conservation Commission and and different stages to get and zoning boards to complete this this potential project. And so now with it being approved, I'm sure there there's a lot of legwork that the developer still has to do, but you know, it's it's going to be, I think, in my opinion, a very successful project and going to support the town center and Bellingham at large and and the businesses in the town center. It's going to be a nice walkable, open space community.
And there are other benefits, obviously, of the town.
Right. Yeah. So you guys work really hard with the developer to find some other benefits. There's a lot of mitigation that goes towards schools, recreational opportunities, traffic opportunities. So, yeah, there's going to be, I think it was a good back and forth between the two parts.
I want to thank you for all your help and the help of your staff. Rebel the people involved on behalf of the. Next.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just really quickly, sorry to interject, Kevin was unable to be here this evening. But on his behalf, I just wanted to express our appreciation for the board's time and and most importantly, your patience over the last year and a half throughout this process. So just wanted to thank you for that.
That's what we're here for. Thank you very much on behalf of the board. Jim, what is next? Asphalt engineering?
Asphalt engineering is up next. Um, yes, well, as as you may remember, at the last meeting, there were the number of items requested. The applicant has provided a PowerPoint presentation, which if we can pull up on the screen and also you have.
Point. It was nine one, I thought.
My apologies. Didn't save it. I love that. I think that. The share screen and and you want to give Eli the opportunity so he goes here and more. Make those trucks like. And then you, if you could share a screen, you know. Yeah. And so now now anyone in the public can also see. Mr. Chairman, are you all set for?
We're all set.
Good evening. Again, I'm Eli Lano, I'm counsel for the applicant Farm Street Property Management and Asphalt Engineering. I'm joined by Mayor Landry Morland and Nate Morland, the owners and operators of this company. Again, we've been with the board for several hearings here, and we appreciate your patience with this and the level of scrutiny and detail and attention paid to this. So I will try to keep it relatively brief here, but obviously understand that I'm here at the convenience of the board and will take as much time going into as much detail as required on any of the items. So we talked briefly about some of the concerns as relate to the town of Bellingham evidence and raised by the planning board. Specifically, we've discussed at length noise, traffic, environmental risks, and then also there were some discussions about the general operations there vis-à-vis sales and outside operators, outside trucks, et cetera. And I think that now, having had several months to digest this proposal with the understanding that maybe the applicant came in a little bit of an unreasonable request, both trying to request quick action by the board and also for more than maybe the town had an appetite for. We've done some soul searching on this application and our request and hope that we can come back with a lower, more manageable request that will both help this company, but also help the town again. To speak briefly about the business, I know that you won an award this week, so give my client an opportunity to brag about the company. What was that?
Oh, this is the first time we've been to do that. No, we're very excited. We had a big quest for the best process that was done over the past couple of months for local businesses. We did win best for paving and seal coating company and best place to work. So that was probably more exciting was the best place to work was really like a true honor. And we're always looking for opportunities to be more efficient, and I think that's a part of why we're here, so we can get back to our employees. And I think that, yeah, it just felt good to be recognized for that, and we couldn't have done it without all of them and you guys and our location and the work that we've done together as a community and and with our business. So we appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
And again, I think it's just important that as we step back, this is a reasonably small but growing business from Bellingham by folks from Bellingham employing people in Bellingham. So that's something that we can all keep sight on. I realize that the planning board does appreciate that, has been to the site and does consider that. So thank you. In talking briefly about the record on this site, obviously, we were here in two thousand and seventeen getting the permit, which allowed for the twenty days set some discussion of when trucks would be going. There was a brief discussion in the record about how snow would be handled because this company does have some minor pickup truck use for snow clearing for during the winter months while asphalt, their primary business is not really weather suitable. I think the biggest thing that we've talked here about and continue to hit on is that there haven't been complaints about this site from the neighbors. There hasn't been undue traffic generated. It's a well-run business. The the Morlands take good care and make sure that they have good-looking trucks that are following the local laws and that everything about this reflects well, both on that and in the neighborhood. The board, as you know, there was the previous determinations and decisions made allowing for this stockpile height. Nothing in our request tonight or over the past several meetings would change the height or width of the allowed stockpiling use. So there's, I realize we've discussed some site concerns about how this would change it, and as it relates to the size and width of the piles, nothing in that front will change. Again, briefly about the the snow removal, et cetera. So currently, again, not to belabor the point, they're approved for twenty days of operation. The beginning of this process, they have requested unlimited amount of crushing days, which was obviously a nonstarter. And it's clear that a hundred is is not a reasonable request at this time either. We understand that the board is being judicious about the time it takes to do this so that we don't take steps that can't be undone. So we, in response to, I guess I'm a little bit out of order on my side here. One of the concerns that we had discussed was about the environmental impact of this. I can speak as much as you want about this, but I don't think it has as much effect as the letter that I've provided you that was requested by the Morlands the previous time the permitting by their neutral sage environmental discussing ABC rubble and the fact that this is doing an environmental benefit, that we take an unusable product, crush it and allow it to be reused as gravel and fill in applications like driveway paving where that's a critical necessity to have a good top coat of the driveway. It has to start with a good base. So I know the board has seen that letter before, and it's been in the public record for quite a while, but obviously we can adjust that as much as is required. We had, and as part of rolling back our ass to this board, feeling, you know, somewhat chastened here that we we came in too hot, and we understand that there had been discussions about potential outside sales of this cross processed aggregate. If we were able to crush to a much higher amount of days than we're currently asking for, we're tabling that request entirely. The trucks on site will be controlled by the applicant. There's no we're not making a request where we would produce enough of this gravel to be able to sell it. So there's no need for that request. And obviously, that's in the record, but to some degree, that request is stricken. And obviously, if everything goes incredibly well, maybe in some amount of years' time, we come back and discuss this again. But this is, it's been clear from the board that the goal is not for us to be back in front of you in any short period of time and also to graciously accept that we are here requesting a raise in the days and to not be, I guess, greedy about the request. The underlying cost, and I know that this is something that Mr. Salisbury wondered about and the rest of the board as well, is sort of how much of this is used and a little breakdown of the finances, which is really the meat of the why for this ask. So right now, you can see that their gravel costs already to this point in the year have been, it's actually, we're now later in the year than this, but in the first quarter, really, first third of the year, they'd spent sixty-seven thousand dollars or eighty-seven thousand dollars on this product product. And the general use would be about what they could do in eighty days of crushing. So that was to show the offset here, and I know that the board had offered forty at the beginning of this. They use eighty days worth of crushing, and that's not what we're in the long run here. We're not asking for eighty days. But the point is that they can use more than forty, and all that that ends up doing, unfortunately, is reducing their status as a preferred buyer from some of their suppliers, but not allowing them to cut off that need. So it ends up creating sort of an economic double whammy where they're still trucking it in, but also no longer big enough producers or big enough buyers from those to have the absolute peak rates on those things. So the forty creates a bit of a financial hardship from that aspect. Again, we have discussed with public safety at the previous meeting that we are willing, we understand that traffic in Bellingham could be a safety hazard and a hassle for the residents here. And we are willing to, at the board's desire, provide money for some mitigation to that, whether it's signage or some other opportunity that we're certainly not qualified to really make a a clear suggestion on, but we're willing to pay or solicit feedback for what would be necessary. And then I think I've sort of skirted around it here, but I think that we we get down that this has been in some ways a negotiation, and obviously, we came with too high a bid and put ourselves on our heels right at the beginning, created a bit of a contentious environment. And for that, we obviously apologize because this, again, is a company that wakes up every day and goes to work in Bellingham. We're not trying to put ourselves at odds with the local permanent authorities. So with that being said, obviously, unlimited was a nonstarter. A hundred wasn't really an option. Forty, I think we've explained to you, hopefully, is is not hugely helpful for this company because of the way it changes what their deal with their suppliers is. So I I would cautiously float that I'm hoping maybe a number around sixty with an understanding that. some days in the winter might still be used for the snow plowing operation, the minor pickup truck work. That's not using the 24-ton dump trucks. And really think we would solicit questions from the board and hope that we can reach a solution that will both work for the company and for the town.
I'm in agreement. Rob, you want to start with questions?
Sure. Yeah, I have just a couple of questions. Looking at the the current stormwater report that you guys have on file, I know that there's some long-term O and M stuff involved. Now, for your deep-sung wooded catch basins, I think the basins four days, have you done any maintenance on those and documented it with any sorts?
Yes.
Yes.
And we put that to conservation, right?
Okay, all right, that's good.
So it does have to be reported back here too.
Okay, all right. So, all right, that's good.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Jim, did I do what you needed me to do? Thanks. Sorry about that.
And then just one other quick thing. I know on the the DEP permit, there's a requirement for the daily materials management records tracking system for documenting what's coming in. What exactly does that look like? Like what what's that entail?
Basically, an intake piece of paper daily changed out. So as drivers come in, they jump out of the truck. It's on a conics container in the back of property, a little door, basically, or that this just spell out kind of where, what it is and the address. And what truck it is and the driver signs for it.
And again, to add to that briefly, all the trucks that are on site are related to these companies. So this is not a situation, and I know it has been a concern previously, that we don't know where this stuff is coming from. So we do know where this, because it's from the job sites that they've gone tear up the asphalt from, you know, your neighbor's driveway situation and bring it back here, log it so that it's compliant with the DEP regulation. And then also, as has been discussed previously, it's there's some reason where under the ABC regulations for asphalt recycling, if it's too fresh or painted or sealed too recently and failed, the kind of things that people don't generally replace driveways for, but if those things happen, it's understood that those don't go in the pile because they're not compliant with the crushing permit.
I guess one other thing too, just regarding permit, I know you have the DEP permit. If if you increase the days for your your pavement crushing recommendation, do you know if, because I'm not too sure about this, are you going to trip any NIPD's type permits? Do you know? Because I know that pavement operations are covered under that.
Sure. So we're not considered a pavement operation because it's a recycling permit. But we have to go back in front of DEP, which is part of why we've been honing in on the number of days being a solidified figure. Because we actually have to go through this whole process again with DEP to reformalize. So if they tripped anything, it would happen. My understanding is that it wouldn't. But that's for the DEP to formally determine, and that's something that they would then go through the process with us on. So it's not considered like a minor change. It would be a full.
Okay, all right. Okay.
No, I think that answers my question.
Nice.
Yeah, I just have one question on your compliance page about the trucks. I know the approximately 12 trucks that was agreed upon in 2017. That's how many you are still planning on using or is it a bit of a fluid number still?
That is a bit of a fluid number and there have been some discussions between Jim and myself about that because obviously that was a finding, not a condition. So there's some flexibility on that aspect of it.
Okay, that's all I can.
Dennis.
How do you separate out contaminations when you say it? When you say you do, you just don't do driveways, correct? You do like parking lots and stuff.
Sometimes, yeah.
So if you're doing a parking lot, how would you separate the contaminants out of that?
Well, so our our foreman, our who are the parking lots out, machines, escalators, skids, steers. And I mean, it's it's actually a very small percentage of what we actually rip out goes back to this property. A large portion goes back to Aggregates Industries. However, if it is local to this area or bringing it back to Farm Street, they're the ones who are ripping it out with any eyes on it. So let's say it's like a, let's say it's like a auto parts store with tons of oil stains all over the parking lot, for example. I want to bring it back to Aggregates, not our shop. So they're they're basically looking at it, assessing it before they load it in the truck and then devising the truck driver where to go, the foreman.
But don't you have two piles there now, one that's contaminated?
No, no. So one's broken asphalt and one's the products we're making, which is the reprocessed product.
All right. And then if you use a truck coming in with contaminants.
They would never come in.
Doesn't get by anybody, you know? How about a driveway that's been seal coated?
Well, after asphalt and seal coated, it's really look at it, ask for how like, is it warrant, is a warrant, is it fresh? Can we make the decision based on what we visually see?
And again, the majority, as I understand it, obviously, I mean, interrupt my client who's far more about sorting this than I do. But as it's been told to me, and I think makes sense that if you have a fresh driveway or you just paid to have your driveway seal coating, it's pretty unlikely that you're then having it ripped up and a brand new one put down. So obviously, in circumstances where they, some other company, let's say, seal coated this and then asphalt engineering is coming to to fix the whole thing, there will be that site inspection to say, hey, this failed for whatever reason, but it's too fresh to bring to our site. So we'll bring it to Aggregates Industries, which obviously not in this town and under a slightly different permitting regime because it's a bigger location.
All right. So say I seal coated and it wears off. Doesn't that entrate you down and get impregnated into that subbase of that at all?
No, no.
Not at all.
Well, it's it's just basically it's the third layer of tires what's seal coated. So it wears over time to the last one, two years before, oh, normal traffic, one or two years. And kind of most of it wears off.
And again, to give the lawyerly answer on this, we're obviously not experts in that, but in relying on the ABC material regulations and also the sage environmental letters. Clear that the Commonwealth has allowed for these type of things to be recycled. So that's, I don't know that any of the three of us are the best positioned to say how this works other than rely on the regulations as they're written.
Right. So on the, what's the percentage of, say, stuff you do? What's the percentage that goes back to your facility for recycling and stuff that just goes back there? I go get it wherever you go.
It's hard to say that just specific, but I'd say total of what we do, total rip outs, I'd say about 20, 25% comes back to us.
And part of that, again, and having discussed this with you now for the entirety of this summer and a little bit of the spring, it sounds like these are heavy trucks. You get a lot of stuff. It doesn't make sense to truck from the northern locations of where your territory is to then bring it back to Bellingham when you have to drive by one of Aggregates facilities and actually their son or any of the others. So there's a logistics piece to all of this that relates to obviously, a fully loaded truck doesn't make sense to bring back all the way through.
Yeah, I was just trying to figure out how you require much tonnage as you do.
Good business.
Well, yeah, so it's it's really the subbase, the gravel subbases. Because obviously, if we're working local, we want to save money and not have to buy it from the supplier. And I, and that's the size to control our quality. So a lot of precept, lottery process gravel will have with pieces of wood in. And we really minimize that. Sometimes you're loading in trouble driveway, you can get grass and you have roots if it probably has that in it. And we're very careful to make sure that it does come back to that and when you get picked out by an escalator, I separate that. So our pile stays very clean as far as strictly asphalt.
Can you, just so I know, the the distinction between Farm Street Property Management and Asphalt Engineering is the, this is my understanding coming from the Farm Street Property Management LLC. It's sort of a landlord, the owner of the property.
Property.
And then the asphalt engineering and the actual.
The customer facing entity here.
Okay, so in terms of parsing out a decision regarding the use of the recycled materials, Farm Street Property Management LLC isn't in the business of asphalt.
I think that's fair to say. They're they're a landlord that is owning property currently legally permitted as an asphalt company.
However, they are the permit holder of the crushing operation.
Oh, I see. So asphalt then.
As far as DEP is concerned, yes, because it has to tie to the property owner.
Okay. Then to pick up on what Dennis was asking about, is it when when a surface is steel coated, is there like a industry standard of like, oh, that has to be at least there for two years, one year or six months or what is the sort of the objective criterion to say, oh, that needs to go to the other place where they handle that stuff or that can come to?
So it's a visual inspection, you know, as for the, if it's seal coated, we should see the actual aggregate in the asphalt again, the actual stone where it's been sealed quite a few times. So typically, it just looks smooth. You can't see the actual stone asphalt. So we want to make sure we can see the visible stone and clearly it's been worn. You can see plows and plows created in it, for example. It's pretty just basis knowing it over the years.
Yeah. And is there like, is there a percentage of the area that you're looking for, like if it's more than 25% or less than some percentage covered with you know, you know, the seal coating, you can see it here, but for 75% of the driveway, you can't see it?
There's some driveways that have more traffic than others in certain areas. So I mean, it's one of those things where make a, just educate the division based on what we see for for how aware, how worn it is. And if it's, you know, still pretty visible, send it to Aggregates.
All right. And and they they separate those seal coats that good, right? It's not.
Depending who you use, there's different products out there. Yes, oil based and water based. There's coal tar, there's liquid asphalt based. So there's many different ones out there.
Yeah.
Some are better than others.
Okay. But in terms of the reason why it's separated out is because it could be a contaminant or harmful to people or is that the reason or?
Primarily because it says in our spec that if it's covered, that you don't bring it back primarily is the reason. So if you see a visible layer, which it is very visible, then that's not something that we're permitted permitted to bring back. So we don't.
Okay. But the the reason, the rationale behind that is I, it's a contaminant or something.
And again, I don't know that we are qualified to speak to that necessarily, but I think that's the understanding is that it's, I know that when it's fresh asphalt, it's not, it's done with this. It needs to be cured, is what they call it. So, you know, basically sunbathed out on the road for however many years before it fails and it's picked back up. So I I think your understanding here is correct that obviously, there are certain things in this that are probably contaminants and a little bit gross. It's obviously an oil-based product. But we've made the decision as a society to use these things for our roads because it's both long-wearing and relatively expensive compared to other options. A little bit useful in running with climates where it can be very hot and very cold. But yeah, I think I think you're understanding that as it's brand new, it's probably not the right thing to then crush up and bury back in the ground, which is why the DEP has these regulations that we're complying with.
Okay. And then so after this, you have to go back to DEP. What, do you have any understanding of what that process is? What do you have to do? What are they going to do or?
I do. It's actually the same process that we went through last time. So it's it's resubmitting all of our specs and plans because we're changing the number of days that we're crushing. So it is quite a process. It'll probably take about three months again. Took about three months last time. So obviously, this would be something that would come into effect for us post DEP approval of the change for the additional crushing fees. But it is a full applicant process again.
Is it a, like you fill out an application, you give them material, do they come up onsite or would?
Sometimes, yeah, it's really up to their discretion. Sometimes they do. I know they use drones a lot. So I'm sure they would probably would do that. And then I did have to go last time to meet in person. So I'm assuming that that would happen again, or maybe it would be Zoom. I don't know with everything changing. But yes, it is, there's a, it's a multi-layer process. Yeah.
And obviously, the local permitting authority is the first layer of that process because if it's not vetted out at the local level, the DEP doesn't deal with it. If it's speculative, a number of days or something, they make sure that you go here first.
So are you saying that as part of that DEP application, they go to conservation or?
No, they reference this permit. So our storage permit.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I am. The my biggest concerns, this is on the water resource district. I read a few minutes ago, you know, oil-based contaminants, those words being used from the guides. You know, I looked on, you know, the compliance page here, the PowerPoint. I see that that references in section or bylaws about hazardous material, but it's under 20, you know, 240 dot 51. But that's not the water resource district. So, you know, I've been reading through, I read through two sage documents. Wasn't part of the process as I told you before. I saw the stormwater review and I didn't see anything in there about, you know, the water resource district and the zone two, basically. And I didn't see it on the DEP permit either. So I guess my first question was, was that part of the supplemental that that was on water resource district?
Yes, that actually was all part of what we had to go through with conservation before we could come in front of the board for the wall storage permit. And then again, through our DEP process, that's all considered in the application process of DEP.
And then conservation was again consulted at this application. Said that from their position, nothing had changed in terms of the days. So it's come back in front of conservation.
So we asked conservation to support officially that or if there was any documents that showed that. And we didn't have any. So do you guys have anything? I guess two things. Number one is, you know, do you have anything in writing from back then in your files? I guess number two is, you know, the water resource district, zone two, where that was part of your application because, you know, the permit that I read through your permit and, you know, usually you lay out the conditions of the situation you're in. And one of those conditions would be that it's on zone two water resource district. So I guess I'd like to see, get some documentation on that because quite frankly, my biggest concern is the water here in town. It don't seem to happen, you know? I wasn't part of the board then, but to me, it's it's a concern of mine. You know, with, you know, there's a separate set of regulations that go along with the water resource district and what's allowed and what's not allowed. It's not, it's different than what you're referencing here in your slideshow. And I guess never mind, I don't think it went out to peer review, you know, the use and the crushing. I see the stormwater review did. I read through the stormwater review. I read through the back and forth that was going through. I have it here. But I don't see that crushing as a part of it. I did see that on say, you know, I got two sage documents and you referred to the other one, but the later one actually shows, you know, five days of crushing on the document. There's trade, there's trade material on here as well, but I don't see it actually going. And typically, you know, on things that are highly sophisticated, like stormwater management and stuff like that, tend to send it out to peer review. I guess it didn't happen. So what I guess would like to see is if you guys have any documents that would show that, you know, number one is that, you know, the DEP that, you know, evaluated this being on a stormwater, you know, on our watershed. And to me, that's a pretty important thing.
Sure. It was a huge piece of it. And I don't know, Jim, if you can speak to that, but the water management that's designed back there was strictly designed for the storage of the asphalt pile and the gravel. Was strictly designed for the storage of the asphalt pile and the gravel pile and all of the hundred-year. Um, storm calculations, everything was done based on runoff from the asphalt pile. And the subsequent gravel pile, the height, the width, that's what all of the calculations were determined based on that operation. There was never any other plan for use back there, the plan from day one was to crush and to store the asphalt back there. And that was all used in the determinations, it was presented, they went through the dozens triggering of these, does it not? That's all part of the fact of knowing that Stahlbrook is there in the district that we were in. We had to do test dig sites and there was a lot involved.
And again, the pile size and width is already prescribed and it's not going to be changed by this, so.
Yeah, I know, I understand that, um, I'm just, you know, my considerations for the town. I I'm looking for the zone two being in this document, the water resource district being part of this process. We send what, we we send out um, stormwater to every project we do practically.
Right.
So to me, that's part of the normal stuff, and I was reading through it and I didn't, didn't see, you know, crushing or when, you know. The words that were just used is contaminant oil.
He's saying that we don't bring contaminant oil products back, is what he was referring to.
Yeah, so I guess I would like to see if there's doc and some more documentation on this and. You know, I I don't didn't have the, you know, I don't have your application to D P, I've got the. The D P permit, but the D P permit doesn't refer to refer to what all that I could see, and if there's something else, I'd love to see.
And so I I know Phil and I talked briefly about this, um, and so there's a couple of different things going on here, so. Stormwater management as the applicant's talking about, uh, certainly was, you know, uh, vetted, peer reviewed. Uh, and and discusses the material back there, what I think Phil is discussing is the uh. In in terms of the water resource district and how it relates to our bylaws and the use. I think, uh, and what I was asking conservation to see if they had a copy, and you guys might have a copy or maybe sage or something or D P. Um, is uh, something referencing that. Um, that it's does not apply to the water resources, so what I was talking with Phil about. And and maybe I'm wrong, maybe it's more than just that, but uh, but in terms of the the stormwater management. Uh, they did have to comply to the water resource district in terms of separation of groundwater, so it's rather than two, it's four. Uh, and so that was, that was vetted through that peer review process and and complies. Uh, but the, I think the one caveat that I was discussing with with Phil is in the water resource district, uh, the hazardous. Uh, material hazardous waste, I forget how it's it's referenced there. Uh, and it's it's somewhat gray as to whether or not this would be included in that, my recollection was that it wasn't. And that's why you didn't have a water resource. Well, exactly, and so I think that's what Phil's looking for is that that.
Yeah, so you so you look at the standard conditions and you. And I, again, I'm holding my head now, but if you look at it, you start going back to the standard conditions and. You know, I guess I I would like, you know, typically we would ask peer review to go out and look at it, and you start seeing things like. Asphalt and, you know, is, you know, oil, one of the definitions of oil includes asphalt. So, you know, this, again, I was looking to see if you guys got any documentation. That the water resource district in this in this permit. In two pieces, the permit, you know, D P permit, and then the second piece is that this activity complies with our. Um. With our water resource district and the bylaws there, and then there's separate bylaws that specify it. I did just, you know, your compliance piece here, I did look at at this, and that refers to a very special section of the bylaws. It's not the same definition, so again, I'm looking for more more information, this is what we're. I'd like to hear from at some point. That's what I have, okay. Um. I have to clarify a few things that were mentioned. Uh, Brian, in regards to what they bring in, under this permit. Application, the applicant proposes to accept favorable. E G not painted coated or pregnant of any substance, over-cured asphalt material, reclaimed asphalt wrap. Collected during the removal of the asphalt paved surfaces in various jurisdictions. Now, within the R C C permit, this is mentioned um, several times. Now, earlier, it was mentioned above your logs and how you do your logs. And it may be a slight change here. But you said, can you explain your log process again for me?
Sure, um, we have our um, a log book for daily sheets. And we pretty much have a date. Um, truck, it came in off, what material is, and the address. The time. Approximately time.
Okay. According to the R C C permit. Um, page ten of fifteen, item number two, operational records of daily law. And you can just clarify this, I I certainly could be wrong. A daily summary of all materials itemized by by material type and point of generation. Received, stored, and or shipped for recycling for use or disposal. Says it, so you log in everything that you ship out? Okay, that increases my comfort level. Dramatic. And um. Based on that, we have the opportunity to review those logs. Um. I'm very concerned about the water, it's a bellamy business, I'm sure you're very concerned about the water. I think we need a clarification. To make sure that um, the stormwater program is actually working. As if and, have you done any sampling in the past forty years of the water? Okay. Two thousand seventeen, we made a recommendation and it was amended. We had asked that the material be tarred. You went back and altered your program. Can you explain what you did to address the fact of not tarping it and how that changed the stormwater management program?
The finalized, to my understanding, the finalized stormwater management program was defined without it being tarred, I think that's something that was brought up in the beginning. And we allowed our engineers and the peer review company to work that out, and I'm assuming larger reasons, I I honestly can't answer that question. But I know that it was all reassessed and redetermined um, and put together by the experts.
Okay. So I I think you've answered answered some of our questions tonight. I mean, I I was prepared to uh, provide an offer tonight, but I have some reservations simply because we don't know where we stand. With regards to guarantee, I don't want to use a guarantee, but. Bellium's on that. Our major natural resource in this town is our water. I want to be very confident. That what we're doing is not polluting the water. You've addressed it by indicating that you have logs that show. Um, you don't bring in material. Um, we've had some discussions and we're more than willing to provide um. Time for snow plowing, an increase of um. Trek hours. Um, but the big thing right now is we want to feel comfortable. We need you to get us to that comfort level on the water. Cause it, cause it is a huge resource, I'm not saying that it's being polluted. I just want some information that I I believe, do any other board members have any concerns about the water?
Yeah, that's my biggest concern too. No.
Rob?
You know, to me, random testing would. Make sure that's not occurring.
Brian?
I, so I go back, I obviously am concerned about the water and bellamy, but. You know, as we sit here tonight. I don't know. I'm not a environmental engineer. So I don't. I don't know what I don't know, and I don't want to create problems where there are none, so. You know, I don't, I don't. I don't know what testing gets us, I don't know what, how difficult or how expensive testing would be. Um, so I just don't know, I guess.
Yeah, water's my biggest concern right now, nice.
I can see where everyone's coming from, I, you know, a little bit more in line with sort of what Brian's saying. I think a lot of this is just a little bit out of my depth, however, Phil made a good point, if we could find some of that documentation from twenty seventeen. I think it would maybe answer a few of the questions that people have, but um. Yeah, certainly don't want to create more work where there isn't needed to be, but I understand where the rest of the board members are coming from.
Phil, right, and.
So.
So.
You're you're an expert in this regard. You're you're more well-versed in this.
So I think the issue is, in this case, so like the stormwater report, everything, it seems everything's designed. Which is great. One issue that I think that the board is, which I don't want to speak to the board, I think. The issue is, is if, let's say, you know, some type of asphalt with. Some type of epoxy on it, painting something, anything that doesn't fall um, in the criteria of the sage report. The stormwater system isn't going to be designed to to handle any type of, it's just not the way it works, I mean, sometimes it. It might get settled, it's just how it is. Um, so the reason why I brought up the Nifty's permit is that that whole permit is for industrial. Stormwater discharges, and it gives some pretty nice um, requirements for making sure that. You know, you're not discharging contaminants into whatever it is that you're discharging to. There is record keeping and reporting requirements, there's stormwater um, sampling requirements involved, and. I think, I think it's just, we're trying to come up with a way of. Integrating something similar to that. To your situation, just because, I know I'm very concerned, I I don't want any contaminants, you know. Just going into the the um, water resource district, so. Um. On that note, I think. I think. Some stormwater sampling, good. The issue becomes. What would be as a threshold, because I need water coming out of the basin, it's not going to be. Crystal clear, clean, no contaminants, it's just the way it is when when water gets discharged from storm. So, and what you test for, all these things. So this is the predicament that I think we're in. From my standpoint.
I think. My concern now, on behalf of the applicant, is it. Does seem like we've been at this for a while, the concern, every meeting has been somewhat different and. I feel like we're trying to play whack-a-mole on my 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 issue, and that's fine, because obviously the town needs to feel comfortable that. The traffic's not the big issue, that the noise is not the big issue, that the environment or the water or whatever, and and not to say it's not the big issue. That it is a solved control on each of these things, and that you're comfortable granting these permits. But again, this was vetted out in twenty seventeen, and I would have looked for the things that. By it's looking for here, but if this is the first time. That that specific request has been made, so I feel like we've been not compliant, bringing something, I just wish.
No, I don't, I don't think you want, I don't want.
Think anyone is accusing, I'm just saying, I wish that since the last continuation, I know. Uh, we've had quite a bit of communication with with Jim, and this is not Jim's fault, or anyway, I just wish that timing wise, I didn't have to keep having this. They're spending money continuously bringing me, and it feels like we could have just done this.
Well, we spoke about tests.
Right.
How do you feel about allowing sampling of the of the groundwater?
So I think that there's some willingness to do this, I think we also run in a little bit of a slippery slope from if we don't qualify for certain. Testing regimes and permit qualifications, there's a reason that there are levels to various things and to just to. Allow whatever use into the highest level of testing is uneconomic and unreasonable, and I'm not saying that's the case here, I'm just.
I don't think it is.
And I just think that there's, we need to make sure that the the. Testing regime or whatever we end up deciding on fits the use here, and again, what we were all hoping to. Find a level that qualified as a minor change, didn't trigger the whole new review, et cetera, so.
We've been in agreement from the beginning on that.
Right. So I guess the answer is that we have comments from the board that are understandable. But there hasn't really been a proposal other than generically about testing, which I think we're okay with.
This is what I'd like to propose. Amy? Y'all said? Okay, I'll I'll try to speak slowly, but it's something I I don't do well. After working in concert with the applicant, we are pleased to offer the follow. An increase in crushing days from twenty to sixty days, which is a two-hundred percent increase. Of what you already have. You also indicated that you can maintain your business operations without rat material from other companies and sites. Accordingly, you will crush only materials from the sites that are under repair, custody, control. And accept no material from our outside companies. Number two, a mechanism we developed for the transfer of assets, quote-unquote, crushed materials. From Farm Street Property Management to Asphalt Engineering. Based on information provided to us at the last meeting, you will not sell your product to any vendors accordingly. The Bellamy Planning Board will not be providing you with the sales to outside companies. Uh, based on the increase in your business operations, we were allowed for truck traffic to increase thirty percent. From twelve vehicles to sixteen vehicles daily. And that we can discuss that. Hours of operational stay the same, however, based on in your presentation, it says dusk. There are hours where um, it does not go beyond eight o'clock, where dusk happens after eight. And the reason we're choosing dusk is when there's no more sunlight in the area. Is concerned about the safety operations for your employees. So in regards to hours, we don't want you working in the dark. We'd like you to start shutting down approximately an hour before sunset or the lack of daylight at the start.
So it's dusk or eight o'clock for those few weeks in the summer when it's really light and.
You're referring to the crushing out back?
Yes, okay, I'll get you on other things as well. Based on, based on your snowplow operations, your traffic traffic count will not be included in trips. Associated with the snowplowing operations, in accordance with the bulk storage permit. You will not be permitted to use your property as a snow farm for snow collected offsite. In light of the fact that you may require limited evening work, we allow asphalt engineering to operate up to four nights per year. While still adhering to the updated traffic count, the planning board should be notified two or three days in advance. Prior to night work, so it's going to be substantial, the neighbors may hear additional truck traffic at night. So you can just send out a notice, if you hear something, you know, it's additional truck traffic. Um. In order to protect the Bentley and Aquifer, uh, for all its residents, we're requesting uh, the following conditions. You indicated that we can review your logs, your material logs. Uh, we'd like periodically to do some sto- stormwater sampling, probably not more than quarterly. Um. And then opportunity for maybe the building inspector, not more than quarterly, to view your operations, what are they doing? As you're unloading, loading, and crushing. I think that the the Bellamy Plan Board agrees that in this instance alone, these permanent modification enhancements. Will meet the definition of an amendment to the covered permits, thus allowing the applicant to avoid the process of reapplying. For new permits, rather we are broadening the permits granted to asphalt engineer.
Is there another application on May? No, this is the last term. Just wondering if I could take two minutes in the hall with my client to show us all of this.
Sure. We all had a chance to review the last meeting minutes? Or any questions? Can I make the motion to approve the last meeting minutes? Second? All in favor of approving the last minute meetings? Please say if I'm saying right. While they're on the floor, I have people in agreement.
I don't, I don't think we can do that.
Okay. All right.
Pick up in like twenty minutes, just.
I'm still Tom Brady.
There you go, Phil.
Oh. There's some air condition that's.
I do, but I don't listen to these days now.
Just thirty minutes until that computer crashes.
I'm sorry.
Thirty minutes until the computer crashes, so.
Okay. Sound like a Zoom meeting?
Did you put that in there?
You're smart. So? Not yet, not that I'm aware of. What's very interesting? Starting running back for the Baltimore Ravens.
Really? Brian, did you grab?
Two starting running backs.
I know about it.
Two weeks. I'm not going to trade.
The public is overwhelming.
Is there anyone else in the public that's joining?
There's not.
No.
Yeah, it's football season now.
Sports ball. No, I get enough of that nonsense. Uh, no, at work. Oh, there's trophies and all sorts of, they get real serious. Do you have a trophy? In your fantasy league?
He actually plays. This is across from you.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, really?
Coincidentally.
Really?
Peter. No, Peter from the other league.
Oh, he's in, he's in a different league or?
Yeah, he's in a league.
Thank you.
So, excuse me, and thank you for, are we, are we back and okay to? Yeah. We, we certainly appreciate the offer and the time spent and the consideration paid. Our two sticking points are, at the moment, we've been forthcoming that the vehicle operations exceeds that number. Hasn't been an issue with traffic in the site, so I don't know. Without really knowing how many trips a day, it's hard to accede to that condition.
And then, what would you? What?
I, I think we feel comfortable kind of sticking to the math perspective from our perspective, which is our limitations on the trucking regarding the gravel operation. Our limitations set by how much material we could bring in, which is limited by how much we can crush. So I think that if we're saying sixty days for crushing, that that's really going to essentially create the limitation on not having excessive trucking that we're looking for anyway. Um, so I would hope that that would be enough just to leave the trucking as it is now and, and know that it's going to be regulated by the crushing regulation.
Okay, and what did you mean? Did you say sixteen trucks a day?
Yes.
Is that like a finding that we're?
No, I just figured we'd increase it thirty percent.
No, I guess, I just don't know what it is. Tell me what, tell me what.
Well, we started with twelve.
In a finding from the twenty seventeen. It's a finding, not.
It's a finding.
Okay, so we're just finding that.
Yeah, we, we, I think we're flexible and what's your other concern?
The other concern is a little bit of what we discussed where, without really knowing how we're doing testing and your understandable comment that there's going to be stuff in any runoff water, whether it's from one of these subdivisions, whether it's just from the road. We again maintain that this is not a dirtier operation, that it's not. Again, I'm not a wetland scientist. I'm not an engineer. I didn't design these basins. But the fact that it was set up for this, that we obviously have concerns about allowing quarterly testing where we don't know what sort of limits we're putting on, because without knowing and without having found Mr. Devine's, the records in the past, et cetera, that we might be able to allay some of those fears. If we set ourselves up for a more stringent testing regime than is required by DDP or by anyone else, I understand the, the value of protecting the watershed and the wetlands, certainly. But it's a hard thing in a vacuum for me to allow the clients and to listen to my clients' opinions on to allow that to be a condition here. It seems, it's not to say that it's speculative, but in the same way that your board throughout the past three or four hearings has said, there's some things you just don't know. We now feel on the other side of that table where I don't know what we'd be agreeing to with that right now. And that's obviously a concern.
Phrasing it differently with the benchmarks.
Correct.
Jim, how do we assess benchmarks? Yeah.
And who pays? Quarterly testing seems frequent for some things and very infrequent for other dirtier, more risky uses than this one. So we just think there's still some workshopping on that. It's not to say that we're not listening and have to.
Rob? Well, what is, what does it cost to do water sample testing?
So, so maybe, so. Yeah, so in terms of benchmarks, in terms of cost, put more homework on it, but I think Sage very likely has a decent, probably a decent understanding and could give you an understanding of what that could cost and entail perhaps. And be able to enlighten the board with that as well.
So I actually called Sage because my intent was to possibly do testing before. And when I called, they were like, well, what exactly does the town want? And then they went back and looked over at everything. They're like, you, you're not where you're operating because I guess it's set far enough back from the, whatever the, the resource setbacks are. That the whole property was designed so that the crushing operation was happening outside of those setbacks. And then the stormwater management was designed for the possible hundred storm worst case scenario runoff from these exact material types and piles. So he kind of said, well, what exactly do they want? I said, I don't really know. He's like, well, I can't really tell you how much it's going to cost or how to do it. And then he's like, well, are they going to test the river? I said, I don't know. Are they going to test, test the basin? Because if they test the basin, it hasn't gone through all the filtration yet. I'm like, okay, so where do you, how, so it was just a lot of questions from him back at me that I didn't really know how to answer. And I think that that's where some of our hesitation comes in, is not really knowing what. Because I imagine that would have a huge effect on cost and just what, what are we being held to?
Right.
That's not already set up by the state to protect this exact scenario and why we picked this location, you know, being very, very forthcoming with exactly what we were doing, something we were already doing in town and picked this exact property and went through all of these motions based on knowing the district that it was in and, and protecting the water through the whole process.
Well, you also realize that this board in two thousand seventeen went to great lengths.
Oh, my gosh, yeah.
I mean.
Absolutely.
I mean, you know, we carved out a zone.
Right, right.
A spot for you. You know, we, we went to great lengths, took a long process, and we're very happy to do it.
Appreciate that very much.
We have become very educated in the past four months on what wraps in your business operation. We were not, not that well educated four years ago. People say, well, you know, that's our fault. Well, I, I think we have an opportunity, you know, to possibly correct it here. And I think hopefully you're willing to work with us to increase that comfort.
Yeah, we, we certainly are willing. We just, again, trying to figure out what it is we're agreeing to. Understandably, this is a, a business that it's a good citizen of the town, although there's a bottom line to keep an eye on.
What's the next step, Jim? I think we need to do a little more homework.
Yeah, so, I mean, sounds like it's boiling down to really just one or two issues. I mean, the finding for vehicle trips, it's, I guess, you need clearer on that, that number perhaps. If that remains a finding and not a condition, I'm not sure there's case law about what degree of enforcement is available for that. So I don't know that. The board is required to have findings that show that the record was put together and well considered, but beyond that. And attorney Salzner in this case may have a different understanding of that, but no. So I think it's just for clarity's sake, uh, that in terms of, oh, you know, uh, water sampling concern. I mean, uh, it sounds like the board is interested in, in furthering that condition. So I mean, if there is an opportunity to narrow it down with your end, uh, maybe providing some clarity, perhaps that there could be a resolution at that next meeting.
I think we're very close.
I do too. Certainly from where we started on this, where the board felt as though they had the gun to its head and to where we are tonight.
Yeah, for sure.
We're in a better place.
Yeah, we're conscious of, we've not set any limit on your, your snowplowing operations for.
Thank you.
Certainly appreciate that.
And you know, and maybe, you know, it may come to the point where, you know, it's a finding. And the finding may say, well, if we've increased it uh two hundred percent for crushing, you know, maybe correlation is saying. You know, we, we can discuss that, but we also want to be, you know, conscious of the neighbors as well. I know we, we haven't heard any complaints. But we just want to be, you know.
Right.
We can go through a couple of neighborhoods there. You know, neighborhood starts, it stops, it starts again.
So with the trucking, aren't you saying that the increased crushing days, you might have less traffic because you don't need to go out and purchase it and bring it back?
Sure. And I think what's hard is, I don't want to use any specific numbers because I think we've made that mistake in the past with being too definitive on things that maybe aren't really definitive. I would say that operationally speaking, as we are operating now, we have, we are exceeding the twelve that we initially thought back in two thousand seventeen. I don't, I couldn't tell you what that number looks like because every day is different. I do feel that even with the increasing crushing, that there are certain days where it actually would be less traffic because on a rainy day, for example, we would not be hauling in material to then have it to use because we would be simply making that material. So it'd be a more steady, regular flow versus those heavier days that we had discussed that we're having.
If we go back to similar calculations.
Yes.